Hi, this is Ally Simon from the Board of Pharmacy. We will be getting started shortly.
You're uh, it got into an accident.
I will ask that everyone please mute their lines.
The repair. No, you know what, it won't, it won't work out.
Again, I will ask everyone to please mute their lines. This is Ally Simon from the Board of Pharmacy.
Airs.
Uh huh. But he's also in Florida.
Yeah, but he may bring the car up. I think he's going to drive the car.
All right, this is Ally Simon from the Board of Pharmacy. We'll get started shortly.
Hi, everyone, it's Cameron with the Board of Pharmacy. We're just waiting for some folks to, to still join and we'll start momentarily. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, this is the Board of Pharmacy meeting for the medical marijuana program.
Yes, so we're about to get started. So I'd ask everyone to please mute their phones. And then we'll go ahead and get started. I understand there are a lot of people on the call, on the hearing today. I also want to remind folks that you can also submit any comments on the proposed rules to rule comments at pharmacy.ohio.gov. Those would also be considered as part of this public hearing process. And folks that have already sent us comments, those will be incorporated and reviewed by the board as part of our mandated review process through the JCAR process. So just want to let everybody know that. So again, if you have comments that you'd like to provide in writing, they can also be provided to rule comments at pharmacy.ohio.gov. And we'll go ahead and get started. So I hereby call to order this public hearing of the state of Ohio. Excuse me, hold on. Let me also record.
Will we get a list of the participants?
Well, there are just phone numbers here, so we can try and provide those lists of participants, but because this is a virtual hearing, some people are just identified by their phone numbers.
So is that a yes?
We can, we can attempt to see if we can pull down this list from our Teams app and, and provide you with the, with the names. And if you want to request that information, again, you could also send it to rule comments at pharmacy.ohio.gov and we'll work with you to provide you as much information as we can. All right, so let's get started. I hereby call to order this public hearing of the State of Ohio Board of Pharmacy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, chapters 119, 3719, 3796, and 4729. This hearing is being convened at 11:05 on March 12th, 2021, virtually. I am Cameron Mac, I'm the Director of Policy and Communications for the State Board of Pharmacy. Let the record show that the purpose of this hearing is to receive comments and testimony concerning the board's proposals to adopt new or amended rules. The reasons for these proposals are stated in each rule summary on the Register of Ohio website. Those persons present are hereby advised, this is a public hearing being conducted in accordance with chapter 119 of the Revised Code, at which, at which any person affected by the proposed rules may appear and be heard. Any person desiring to testify may present their position, arguments, or contentions orally or in writing, offer witnesses, and may present any evidence tending to show that these proposed rules are unreasonable or unlawful. No person here may cause to examine anyone giving testimony at this hearing. Please let the record show that the board has received written comments from the Ohio Medical Cannabis Industry Association, and those have been incorporated into the record of this hearing. Copies of the proposed rules have been available since February 2nd on the Register of Ohio website. At this time, I would ask folks, anybody that's wishing to testify, to please state their first and last name, and then we'll go ahead and get started. So is there anybody that wishes to provide testimony today? I'm sorry, ma'am, could you say that again? Yes, we're referring to any of the rules that were listed in our public hearing notice related to the medical marijuana program. Well, and that is, again, that is something that's in the public hearing notice. Now, I just want to be clear with folks that this is not a, a public hearing to raise the cap on dispensaries. It is just one of the rules in that process addresses that, but that rule is, allows the board to, to make that decision to raise the cap on dispensaries. So that number or that decision is not being made, but rather the rule itself authorizing the board to do that is on the books, or is under discussion today. So I just want to make it clear that this is not a hearing to decide on the, the number of dispensary licenses that will be authorized moving forward.
Okay, I guess I'd like to speak up, Jack Starcroft.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm wondering why, why we want to change the authority and allow the board to, to add more dispensaries. Obviously, this isn't being done if, if the board wasn't planning on adding more dispensaries. Wondering what the justification is, what the reasoning is.
Sir, and, and again, this is, I just want to remind everybody, this is a, this is a public hearing, so we, obviously, we expect to, to get anyone's comments or concerns. You know, it's, it's certainly, if you have certain questions about the rules that you, you'd like us to answer, I, I'd, we, I'd actually defer you to making the, sending an email to rule comments at pharmacy.ohio.gov, and we can try and address offline in a, in a different format, but this is, this comment, this is just for the specific comments related to the administrative ones.
So you guys aren't prepared to speak to the justification for the rule today?
Sir, the justification of the rules is in our rule filing, and we can certainly, if you email us, we can certainly provide you with that information.
Respectfully, that's not what this is about. This is about to review the amendments to the, the, that have been proposed in the public hearing notice. It's, it's not a Q and A.
Right. But if, again, if you, if, if, and I just defer folks, because I know there's a lot of people on here, and it's a little unwieldy in a virtual meeting, but if, if folks do submit questions or concerns to rule comments at pharmacy.ohio.gov, we will work our best to get responses to you for your specific rule-related questions. So going back to the rules as a whole, is there anybody here that's seeking to provide comments or testimony on the impact of the rules as they are drafted and submitted with the General Assembly, with JCAR?
I would like to testify on behalf of the rule changing to allow 18-year-olds to work in the dispensary.
Okay. So, and that's to support the, and that's to make the change to drop the age down to 18, is that correct, sir?
Yes, I just, I personally believe that, um, since patients here, I mean, I've been a patient since I was 17. I have a pretty good knowledge of the program, and I believe that if you're allowed to be a patient, you should be allowed to work in the dispensary, helping out other patients as well. I just think that that makes logical sense, that's all.
Okay, thank you. We will take that.
Thank you.
We'll take that under consideration, and, and sir, your name is Ryan Fletcher, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, anybody else that's wishing to provide testimony on the rules as drafted?
Hey, Cameron, this is Matt Close with the Ohio Medical Cannabis Industry Association. We did submit written comments. I, I thought I heard you say that you got those. I submitted them last night, and I appreciate your time and, and Ally's time, and Chairman and Director Scherhold for all your work on this. I know it's a tough thing to try to figure out. It's also good to see Jeff Corf and Greg May on here. I haven't seen you guys in a long time. You know, I'm going to speak generally to one particular area, and to be honest with you, I don't have in front of me what, what section of the code is being amended, but mine is due to the, the lottery and how these awards, these, these licenses will be awarded in the process to get there. It's impossible to justify the impact a lottery will have on businesses when the proposed rule provides no information regarding the structure of the lottery the board is considering. The ambiguity of the rule as written gives the board broad authority to structure and application process without any feedback from stakeholders or complete business impact analysis, which has gone already through CSI. Lottery was not, uh, the, 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 the consideration of the lottery was not in the, in the BIA. The new language completely changes the medical marijuana dispensary application process. A change of this magnitude will have a significant impact on the businesses operating in the industry that was not considered in the BIA the board filed with CSI. As you can tell, I'm actually reading that because I want it to be succinct, and we're just unclear, not saying we're objecting, we're saying we're objecting to, not even objecting, we're, we just don't know what it is. We don't know what it looks like. You know, my association is happy to work with the pharmacy board. At no point do we want to drag this on any longer than it's gone. I've been in the press here recently, you know, talking about the lack of dispensaries. I know that the board understands there needs to be more dispensaries because patient population is growing. I've said recently, you know, around 5,000 a month, we just, we really don't have enough dispensaries, and I just want to make sure it's a fair process to get to, to where we need to be. So I appreciate your time, and again, we submitted a much more lengthy statement than that, and with that, I will turn it over. Thanks, Cameron, appreciate it.
Great.
Great.
Matt? Is there anybody else on the call or in the meeting that wishes to provide testimony on the rules? Do I once? Do I twice? Okay. So the board will give careful consideration to these rules, and will review the testimony and all information submitted when determining whether to adopt the proposed actions concerning these rules. If there is no further evidence, and to enter into the record, this hearing is hereby closed. Thank you. And just as a reminder to everybody, again, it's, there are a lot of people on here. Rule comments at pharmacy.ohio.gov. If you've, we'll, we'll still accept comments after this hearing period. So I encourage everyone to get them to us, hopefully, maybe by, at least next Tuesday, and we'll make sure to incorporate those into our review and discussions of our proposed rules. With that, the hearing is hereby closed. Thank you all. With that, the hearing is hereby closed. Thank you all.